Next, we have our items from the town solicitor. Item 23 is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter[6.85][6.85]initiative to amend the town charter to add a recall provision.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, so specifically, I think we want to revise the motion for it to be, because what happens with these is, you know, I'm not familiar with this, but going over the town charter, applicant files a petition with town hall, then the town solicitor has, the town clerk gives that to the town solicitor, the town solicitor submits a written opinion regarding legality of the petition 14 days from the date of the petition, and then at our next town council meeting, we determine the validity of the petition. So, I'm gonna actually turn it over since the applicant's put it into the town clerk, and now we want to hear what the solicitor has to say about the recall provision, and we have to determine if we're going to market accepted or invalid. Mr. Davis?
I had received from the clerk, a petition filed by Mr. Haynes that was dated February 15th, 2019, in which Mr. Haynes petitioned for amendment to the town charter, seeking a provision, a recall provision, and after careful review of the charter and Mr. Haynes' petition, I believe it's a legitimate and valid petition, and I find that it should be approved and deemed valid by the town council. I noticed a couple of considerations that one may make, and that is, Mr. Haynes had requested that it be added to a specific section, and it didn't seem completely appropriate to add it where he wanted to. Is it fatal? No, it's not fatal. And then there was something that I'm not sure was overlooked, or was intended to be that way, but the way it's written, it refers to, the suggested language refers to a council member that has been in office for six months, doesn't specifically address whether that would be somebody that is reelected, or it's following an election. And so, notwithstanding those considerations, I think it's appropriate, a valid petition.
All right, so do you want a motion instead, we have a motion either saying that's accepted or invalid, because we didn't have that?
I'll make a motion. Sorry.
Which one, though? Accept?
To accept.
Okay. All right, there's a second for that. All right, discussion? Anyone from the council? Anyone from the public?
Town, Chapel, 21st Street, Narragansett. Back in 1991 through 1993, as some of you may know, we had the RIDE, Rhode Island Department of Education, come in and do an investigation of the special education programs in Narragansett. We also had the US Department of Ed, Office of Civil Rights, come in to do an investigation. RIDE found so many violations that every IEP in town, every child's individual educational program had to be redone. Teachers were told to sign a paper, and then the child's IEP was written by the then-special ed director, and handed in, as if the teachers agreed to this document. The civil rights department came in and found a climate of intimidation, coercion, and retaliation, which is very difficult to find. We were in a very difficult position, because we could not get the people on the school committee to step down. There was no recall amendment, and it was, there were some very nasty things going on, going on in the special ed department. And it was very frustrating for the citizens who had worked so hard to see civil rights violations, and not to have any way of recalling people who had been elected to serve the people. I think it's absolutely essential, because sometimes we don't know what these public servants are like until they get up on the podium. They avoid answering questions, they vote on things for political reasons, and they don't do their due diligence to the town. So I'm absolutely for a recall amendment, and I hope it's not being used as a political baseball.
I'll make a few comments on this. So, first of all, I will say that I'm, just my personal opinion is that I think all towns and cities should have the recall option. That's just kind of a side note, because the personal opinion doesn't really matter for these initiatives. It's not whether we agree or disagree with the intent of the petition. The way that this works, based on the charter, is that unless the petition is prohibited by state constitution, federal constitution, state laws or federal laws, or recognized judicial decisions interpreting state or federal law, then it should be accepted. That's really the only reason that a petition for an initiative would be marked invalid. And it states it again under the validity section of the charter. If the town council determines that the proposed petition is invalid because it conflicts with federal or state constitutions, federal or state laws, or recognized judicial decisions interpreting federal or state law, the said petition shall be marked invalid. So again, it's very clear in the charter, the reasons for marking a petition invalid. It doesn't have to do with the intent, or if we agree with it. A petition can really be about anything, as long as it doesn't break state or federal law. And that's really what this is all about. So, in this case, I don't see any reason why it would be breaking state law, federal law. We have recalls in other towns and cities. So, to me, very clear cut. So, that's my position on this, and really, those remarks will carry over to the other petitions tonight as well, because it all falls under the same rules in the charter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council?
Yeah. Mark, can you expand on that? Can you, it's my understanding that it has to pertain to an ordinance or a town law, and you can either amend it or alter it, but you can't create a new one? Can you expand on that?
I will pull the language out, but I believe you can introduce a new ordinance.
New ordinance.
Yeah. I'm fairly certain I can pull the exact language out. Essentially, it's an act or a matter. So, you can, it's proper, as I said, in my opinion, I believe it's a proper petition.
Right, but you can't-
This is a charter amendment, is what this essentially is.
Right, but you can't, like, add a resolution, or add something new, right?
Says the process shall permit the voters. This is section in Chapter 4, Voter Initiative and Referendum, Section 1-4-1, recent part. Process shall permit the voters to enact and/or rescind town laws, regulations, ordinances, and resolutions.
Right. Enact is a key word.
Okay. Are we good? All right, is there anyone else? All right, so before we vote on this, the recall, the recall, we have two-year election cycle on the town in Narragansett, so going to a recall in a two-year election cycle will essentially subject us to perpetual campaigns that a minority can essentially put on, that's the way this reads, I believe it's 25%. A lot of places that recall might be appropriate would be where there's longer terms, such as four-year terms. These items come from, this item comes from somebody who lost in the last election. So, it's, it's a, so it's a, recall elections, for me, are something that's gonna lead to, the minority, the voters, is going to be able to essentially have perpetual campaigns with no, with low turnout elections, essentially. And I just, I think that's a problem. I think that the term of office is short. There was an aggressive campaign by the Friends of the Library, the Democratic Town Committee in 2018. There's a lot of people in the town who don't like those results. We've heard from them since the election, who've been coming out consistently to these meetings to share that point of view, but it doesn't mean you can keep on doing elections. I think the initiative's bad policy, I think it's gonna lead, as I said, to perpetual elections and campaigns. I'm gonna urge Narragansett voters not to sign this. But legally, there is no obstacle to initiating a change to the charter to allow for recalls. Recalls are permitted in cities and towns across the country, so I'm gonna vote to accept this initiative despite its potentially horrible consequences. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to chance to speak, Matt.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
For it does as well. You know, this motion, what I heard Mark say is that it is permitted, correct? So although you're saying that this is valid, it doesn't mean that we necessarily need to vote this forward. Mark, there is a law, if I'm not mistaken, in the state of Rhode Island, that if any elected official is convicted of any type of misdemeanor, felony, or ethics violation, they can be taken out of office. Is that correct?
I'm not familiar with that specifically.
Terry, our town clerk? Because I have that from looking it up on our state government website, and if you take a look at what's happening here, we have a Narragansett representative democracy. People are elected for two-year terms. And I agree with what Matt just said, that if we're gonna do this, it's any time, Mark mentioned that one day after an election, let's just say the five of us get reelected, one day after that election, any special interest group who did not like the slate of candidates voted in has a right for a recall. We have the ability, if someone has committed some type of a crime, to have them taken out of office. However, in this motion brought forward, there are no reasons given why a recall, or why a person would be recalled. It's just a blank slate. So, that leaves it open to any type of interpretation from any type of a special interest group, either library, maybe the neighborhood association group. I just think that this is going down the wrong way. Elections have consequences. We are a democracy that is represented by people who are elected, and I don't believe that this recall should go through.
All right, thank you.
In looking at this, Mark, this could continue on with somebody getting elected, then another certain group of people could not want that person, and continue, and continue, and continue. What would this cost the town?
Well, my understanding is for a special election, it costs somewhere around $35,000.
Right. So, people run for two-year terms, they get elected, and then we're gonna roll them out, roll them out, roll them out, and spend all this money for what? I think it's kind of crazy. I think people are just looking at an avenue to just try to get people out of a position that they were elected, because they don't like what's going on. And this is a town, two years you're in. You make decisions, not all the decisions will be in the direction that people want, but that's what they're elected for. So, I'm definitely not voting for this.
Just to speak on this again, so this is, in my opinion, this is a bipartisan initiative. It affects anyone elected in the same way. Anyone can be recalled for any reason, so it's not a partisan petition. And I'd also like to just remind that it's very clear in the charter we have. The charter exists for a reason, the rules are right there, it's not about whether we like the petition and the contents of the petition. We stick to what is laid out. We don't have the luxury of voting no because we don't like it.
But that's not what I said. Jesse, I said that I'm not voting no because I don't like it, I'm voting no because the exact opposite. Someone's gonna have a recall because they don't like who was elected. It's a different thing. It's totally different. There's nothing to laugh at. That's exactly what's going on here. Let's face it. Let's call it what it is, Jesse. This is happening because a group of people did not like the slate of people that got elected. That's what's happening.
It doesn't affect-
You've tried, you've tried everything to try to make us not vote this way, and now you're trying for a recall.
I'm not trying anything, I have nothing to do with this petition. That's the first thing.
Really?
Yep. Secondly, this won't even affect this term. It wouldn't go into the 2020 ballot, so it has nothing to do with us at all.
It actually does, because the 2020 ballot, as Mark just explained, should any five of us run and win, the very next day, one of us could be recalled. That's what-
I'm not assuming that any of us are gonna elect the necessary-
I'm not either, but that's what-
One, certainly interpret the language to read that way.
Thank you.
So again, back to the wording in the charter. Unless this is prohibited by state law or federal law, it should be marked valid. It's clear.
All right, I just wanted to make a brief statement. I wish we had this in place now. I'll tell you why, because I would start a private campaign to get myself- I would support this.
I agree, yes.
A simple solution to these objections is simply to do the will of the people, and that way you'll never get recalled.
Thank you, Whit.
Stanley. I wasn't gonna say anything, Jill, but I think, I think you're gonna point that. I mean, I, you know, I always disagree with some council person on some issues almost all the time. So that means I can come here and start a voter initiative to get rid of that person, because I don't like them for whatever reason, whether it's a, whether it's an issue about the town, whether I just don't like them, but I can try to dig up a lot of issues to get some person out, and I, so that means every election, I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna file a petition to get the politician out of there that I don't agree with. You know, I guess I got a Republican tendency, or whatever, so therefore, I'll attack every Democrat or socialist up here, you know? I'll just do it out of general, general, general idea. I'll do it every election. And that's kind of what I kind of hear, we can be going after you, unless it's legal, I guess if it's a legal issue, something that's serious, but we're always at odds on issues in the town. Of course, I'm on the money issues, zoning issues, but there's always issues out here, and I don't think we gotta be throwing you out because I don't agree with you. So I kind of like what you had to say there. I hope you can listen to that, maybe. Let's not get too aggressive here. Let's try to fix, let's try to analyze the library thing, or whatever, let's try to analyze it, get costs started, let's try to make a conscious, a professional decision, rather than throw you out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
This young woman on my right-
Could you, could you name your name and address?
Rossalyn Sinclair, Washington, Delaware. Made a wonderful case for this when she spoke about educational, the educational process. Now, we all know why we're here tonight, there is no question, but the idea of a recall is because the will of the people has been ignored. From what I understand, the last town council went along with all of this. The longer we take, the more it will cost to do what is the inevitable. And I think you have to start listening to the will of the people.
Yes.
Yes. It is best for you, and it is best for the town. My voice is so loud.
If we voted in November, I can remember going into the library in October, saying, here are the four candidates, basically, we'd like you to vote for. It should be no surprise that Matt and Jill voted the way they did, because they ran on that platform. Rick was the mystery man. And some people felt he would join Matt and Jill, some people didn't. But the voters elected five people. That's it. They rejected two others that the library board was chafing at the bit to elect. We voted. Two people we know would vote one way, two people we knew would vote the other way, and a mystery person, who personally, I thought would vote with these people. I was right. And that's it.
Thank you.
Carter, Star, 23, Second Street. Actually, there's two more points to this that haven't been addressed here or mentioned. Is one, after the vote tonight by the council, that goes along, like what Jesse says, and like the solicitor has said, it should be accepted because it's not a violation. It does need still to get a certain number of signatures from the public, or in the next 120 days, I predict. Then, it goes on the ballot. So the citizens have an opportunity to either not sign, if they don't want it, or to vote against it in the general election. That's not the decision of the council for tonight. And as Jesse said, it's not, it's not an opinion of whether you like what's on there or not, it's whether it's legal and it's according to the charter. And there's still many options for the voters in Narragansett to have their voices heard regarding all of these initiatives tonight, because they all should be passed.
Vicki, Crown and Shield, South Trail. I just wanted to back up what Carter was saying, in the fact that this is a voter initiative, and exactly what it means is this is gonna go back to the voters. So, anything that we vote, the council is just putting it back to the voters. They still have to go through a process, there's many hoops that they need to go through in order to get it on the ballot in 2020, where the voters can vote for it. So, if you're saying no now, you're really just saying you don't want this to go to the voters, which is kind of par for the course at this point, but I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion approved, three to two. Item number 24 is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to place a binding resolution on the ballot to use bond funds to renovate the Belmont Building.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion, so the same, I'm gonna, as I went through the process before, I'm gonna just turn it over to Mr. Davis for his opinion.
I received a petition received by the town clerk, date stamped February 15th, 2019, by Mr. Haynes, seeking that a binding resolution be submitted to the town council. The petition and the binding resolution, as Mr. Haynes submitted it, states, "I, as a resident in Narragansett, wish to have placed on the ballot a binding resolution to use the $5.00 million bond that was overwhelmingly passed by the town residents, and that the bond money should be used exclusively to renovate what I call the Belmont Building to become the new town library." At the review of the proposed language, and the governing law, which would be the Bond Act in this particular case, I find it to be invalid. I find it to be invalid for a number of reasons. One, the binding resolution states in part that the bond was overwhelmingly passed by the town residents. That is not true. It was passed by a majority of voters. That the, and then, the real, the real problem for this binding resolution is in the language that says the bond money should be used exclusively to renovate the Belmont Building. And as we all know, the bond that we sought commission to issue from the town legislature, which was approved, provided for the bond funds to be used for more than the renovation. It provided authority to acquire, it permitted the use of bond funds for the purchase of equipment, and so, this purports to change the bond language that was approved at the town legislature, and therefore, on its face, is invalid. You can't unilaterally change the bond language, you must submit the change to the legislature, the legislature then must approve it, and then it must be ratified by the town voters. So, I find this to be invalid, and that was my opinion.
So again, the motion is to make the determination, is there a motion to mark this as accepted or invalid?
Motion to mark as invalid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
This one is, to me, more difficult to kind of interpret than, I think, all the other petitions tonight, just because of some misstatements in the wording. So, it's tough because it doesn't necessarily break state or federal law, but it is, there's misstatements, and it's not, it's confusing, and it could cause confusion in the future, so I find this one to be, wait, I-
I can go back to your issue.
Well, let him finish, and then we'll-
So, you know, I just stated last time that it's very clear how these are validated or not, but this is where I start to get a little bit torn on which way to go here, because you do want any petition to go out if it falls within the guidelines, but if it is not clear what it's for, and if there are things on there like, should be used, instead of must be used or will be used, then it may be possibly too vague to be effective as a initiative. So, that's just where I'm at with that right now, but looking forward to hearing from the audience on this.
My only, my only comment is that, the earlier one you spoke to, unless it violates state and federal statutes, then it's just up to you to pass it on to the voters and let the voters say, no, we don't want this. So, the decision's taken out of your hands, it's either yes, because it violates state or federal, or it doesn't. And that's basically the only thing that you can rule on.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, the $5.00 million bond, it's location specific, correct?
One could argue it's location specific. The ad, as we all know, had stated one way in the bond referendum another, and bond council, to this point, has been unwilling to opine one way or the other on that particular matter.
Well, it's my understanding that they did rule on it.
I spoke with bond council today, and that specific issue is, in my conversations, bond council is not resolved, although, yeah, there's no alternatives on the table, and, you know, no one's been pressed to write an opinion of it.
Right.
Mr. Farrar has not been pressed.
Okay, well, let's assume it's location specific, and it's my understanding that there is no expiration of that bond, is that correct? That bond just sits there until we use it?
There are definite timetables for which bonds must be issued. I'm not bond council, but I can tell you that there is a definitive time to issue bonds, to reimburse yourself for certain expenses. For example, we purchased a building.
Correct.
And you have a finite amount of time to issue bonds to reimburse yourself.
It is my understanding that the reimbursement portion of the purchase, that, there's a clock ticking there that runs out, 18 months from October 2018, and that's the only part of the bond that expires. The renovation part continues. The renovation part continues. Basically, that bond is sitting on a shelf somewhere, might be in this building, and we have access to renovate the Belmont space only. And that's, that goes in perpetuity. That bond does not expire. Maybe a finance director can confirm that or not confirm that. That is my understanding of the bond. So this voter initiative is, it's already happening. I mean, it's already in place because of the bond rules. Maybe Laura can help me here, please.
Anyone else?
Mark. So we both read the same sections of the charter related to the petitions and, you know, where it says that petitions can be marked invalid, and it gives the reasons why. And it's, in all the different sections, like two or three times, it says if it violates state or federal law. So how are we, how would we reject this when it doesn't cross that line?
Well, as I stated, this, this does violate state law. The Bond Act, the legislation that was passed authorizing this bond, would be amended and therefore violating what was approved by the legislature. So I'm not sure where the miscommunication is, but there is definitely a violation of state law if this were to, or the Bond Act, which is evidenced in House, Chapter 285, House Number 188182, and the Senate version, which is identical, S. 2967, Chapter 237, spells out specifically what the provisions that were, for the bond, that were approved by the legislature and then later approved by the voters differs from this language here. And that's a violation of the Bond Act. So the Bond Act is state law. It's a violation of state law, and as such, I find that it should be invalid.
So which, can you specify like the portions that it violates, or at least...
I gave you the, the primary one in this particular case. This limits the use of bond funds to renovation. The Bond Act, as you know, provides for the acquisition, the renovation, the purchase of equipment. I can't recall all the authorized expenditures, but it's, it's not limited to the renovation. We, we won't even get into, you know, bond council's concern over trying to mandate the issuance of bonds. That's a whole nother issue because, as you all know, to issue bonds, the town council president and the director of finance or the treasurer must make certain representations under tax law, under state law, under securities laws, and if they don't feel comfortable making those representations and they refuse to sign, you've got a quagmire. And when you have a quagmire, as bond council will tell you, it, it makes issuing or selling bonds nearly impossible. So in talking to him, he's, he's not a fan. He doesn't think it's good for the town and he doesn't think it's good for the issuance of bonds to have this, trying to mandate something that if the town council president and/or the finance director believes that they can't under oath represent those, to those things that need to be represented and they don't sign them, it's going to be a real issue for the town.
Thank you.
So he's not a fan of these types of proposals and he's been bond council for over 20 years in Aragantin, so.
It's been a long time since 2014, but when we voted in 26, I don't think anyone even knew what the Belmont Building was. We voted on the old IGA supermarket. That's what we voted on. We didn't vote for the liquor store. We didn't vote for that hideous second floor. Every one of us went to the ballot. We knew the library committee had sought an ax, the idea of renovating the old library. And we voted for 15,500 feet in the old IGA market. That was what the vote was on. And all of a sudden, we find that we have the second floor and now we have the liquor store. That ain't what we voted on.
That's right.
Thank you.
Laura, can you come up here and explain the bond to me one more time? And as far as the liquor store, I think, well, she can explain. We had a separate $400,000 on the liquor store, separate from the bond record.
What we have is authorization for $5.8 million. It's an authorization to go out for bonds. That just says that we have permission from the state general assembly to go out for $5.8 million in bonds. We haven't gone out to bond. However, we have made an expenditure that we anticipated to be reimbursed by bonds, which was the purchase of the building. We have 18 months from the purchase of the building to use those bond proceeds or go out to bond in, in order for that expense to qualify with those bond proceeds.
Now, would they just include the Belmont space or the liquor store and the Belmont?
No. So $400,000 was also authorized by the town council to go out for a separate borrowing because that would be taxed. That's a taxable bond. $5.8 is a...
So the bond money that was voted on is being used for the Belmont space and not the liquor store, correct? In spirit, because we got a separate floor that we had to borrow.
It would actually depend on what you use that side of the building for. If you choose to use the liquor store side as part of the library, then yes, that could be covered with the $5.8 bonds.
I think we gotta, I think this council needs plenty of liquor. I think we're gonna keep it as a liquor store. All right, all right. Don't go, don't go without, hang on, hang on. I have another question for you about the renovation money. The way I understand it, the bond sitting on a shelf and say we have a change of council or somebody adds an epiphany and, and we move forward, the library build out at the Belmont, and that money's sitting there, we can use it anytime in perpetuity, correct? That bond?
An authorization does not have an expiration date. Your authorization is out, the general assembly made the authorization, the council approved it, it sits on the shelf until such time as we want to bond or the council decides to vote and renew that authorization.
Okay. So that makes this voter initiative, you know, I mean, I'm not going to support it because of, you know, the spirit of the bond is in line with this voter initiative. So I can't support this. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? Any other comments? Yes, Karen.
This town decided they wanted to be non-political when we had elections, and I really resent the divisive language that's often used by you, Mr. Mannix, about how the Democratic Town Committee wanted certain people to be elected. And I may have to remind you that Mr. Murray is Republican and we supported him too. I just find it very divisive that you're trying to make, divide the community again and again and again by calling us things such as the angry mob, such as we're all bent with guilt banging. All this language is very, very divisive and it's not team-odding. And talk about one brain, the three on the right are always voting for the same thing almost all the time. And I have to commend the town solicitor for doing some of the research this time to prepare himself, although I don't necessarily agree with his opinions.
The issue seems like our legal expert, this is our lawyer, our legal guy is telling us it's against the law. I don't know why. I think that finishes the question. I don't think you want to do something that's against a legal opinion.
So I think that's the end. Thank you. Thank you, Stan. We also, in the act, is there an authorization to borrow? And that's the act, that is the state law. And so that authorization would be changed if this particular item was approved because this would be basically resolving that we would be forced to borrow, would be forced to borrowing, and that would violate the act. So all in favor? This is a motion to accept.
That's invalid.
I'm sorry, the motion to invalid. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 25 is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to amend the town charter regarding the authority to sell town-owned property. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Discussion. I'm going to go to Mark for the opinion that he put forward to us.
I received a petition submitted by Mr. Haynes, date stamped February 15, 2019, in which Mr. Haynes seeks a voter initiative to amend the Aragantin Town Charter, Section 1-3-1, which speaks to the authority of the town council. And I'm not going to read the language that's in there. The gist of it is the town council can, as the authority has written, to purchase, to lease, to sell, to condemn, to mortgage, to hold. Basically, it has the authority to do whatever it wants, deems appropriate with town property. Mr. Haynes wanted or suggested that that language be modified. I, the gist, I believe Mr. Haynes was getting at is he wanted to restrict the town council's ability to sell town property and limit that only to the instances in which the residents have voted to sell town property. The problem, and I think it's, I think it's an appropriate amendment had it been done and executed properly. The language and the modification, as Mr. Haynes submitted, just doesn't work. What he's suggesting be deleted and what's added makes the provision impossible to, to follow or understand and therefore makes no sense. And so I would argue, before you even get to this point about determining whether it's a valid one or an invalid one, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a legitimate petition because it makes no sense the way the proposed language works. Again, had the modification been done properly, I think it would be a valid, I'm not saying I agree with it, but I'm saying it would be a valid petition. But as drafted, it's my opinion that it makes no sense and therefore it's not even a legitimate petition.
So we're gonna, is there a motion to accept or mark invalid?
Motion to mark as invalid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And discussion on that and what Mark talked about, it essentially, this particular one essentially creates one long run-on sentence is the problem. Okay. Go ahead, Win.
Basically, it's to restrict you from selling any property in town. What's happened over the number of years, people have suggested to sell the Clark Road property, people have suggested to sell the Middle Ritz property. Now, we're back to the library. To me, no property in town should be sold unless it's by the approval of the voters or the residents in this town. It's too big. We're into an era of open space. Town councils should not be able to sit up there and say, "I want to sell this or I want to sell that." I think I worded it pretty closely to that. I took up to sell and I replaced it with to sell town property with voter approval or voter... Is that right? Why don't you read it, Mark?
I can read it as you modify it, if that's, if that's okay. So as modified, this is how I would read. I think, Win, what you didn't take into consideration, I'll read it, but I think what you didn't take into consideration was the language as follows. Because after the words sell, there was lease, mortgage, all that language. So the way it would read as modified as you proposed it would be as follows. "The town may acquire property within or without its corporate limits for any town owners, in fee simple or any lesser interest or estate by purchase, gift, devise, lease, or condemnation." This is where the change occurs. "The town may sell town-owned property only with residence permission through referendum, lease, mortgage, hold, manage, and control such property as its interests may require." That doesn't make any sense.
Then you should go back and you continue with the rest of it. All we're doing is replacing to sell with that phrase.
It's not, it's not that simple when you have to reword that paragraph.
Which, which state, federal law does this violate?
I'm suggesting it's not even a valid petition because it makes no sense and it doesn't reach that threshold. I mean, you can't, in my, in my opinion, you can't have, you can't have something that makes no sense being voted on as valid or invalid. It just makes no sense. No one, what, I don't even know what that means. I don't think anyone knows what that means. And that's why I find the way I think.
And thank you.
I'm not going to sit up and argue, but I know the vote's going to be good that way anyway, but I disagree with you, so we can let a judge decide.
All right. All in favor?
I want to say why. I'm supporting, for one reason, the attorney doesn't think it's a valid petition. The other reason is I don't like, we have elections, we hire five people, all right? I don't like the idea of going back to the voters to, you know, an election to sell the building. I mean, that's, you know, that's not what democracy's about. I mean, you elected us, you've got to make decisions. I think the easiest path went for you is that if we go to sell a town property, that you need a supermajority of four, one. I think that would have resolved a lot of these issues that spun up. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Sure. What I'll say to Win is that I want, I'm not going to say you should change it, do a supermajority, and it's just a suggestion is if this was rewritten, just so it's grammatically more readable and doesn't have a run-on sentence, then it would be very easy, I think, to validate because there's nothing, you know, against state law. So it's just...
Petitions are the most, so I can do that.
What's that?
I can do that. I set up my computer all night just to petitions.
So I'm actually, I do find this very difficult because do you vote to validate a petition that is not necessarily understandable to people because of the way it's worded, even though it doesn't violate law? So I don't know the answer, and when Mark says that it's not a legitimate petition, I don't see any outline where that's defined in the first place. Does he even have the authority to say whether something's legitimate or not? Because that's not part of the process in the charter. So I'm actually going to abstain from this vote because I'm not sure, you know, what the precedent is for this type of thing, so that's, that's my position.
All right. Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Motion approved. To Mark is invalid, four to zero. Item number 26 is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to amend Chapter 42 of the Court of Ordinances to add new Section 42-2, acquisition and renovation of new library at the former Belmont IGA location. Is there a motion?
I'm going to motion. Did I get it?
All right. We're going to first go to Mr. Davis on this item, which is, and then go over there.
I received from the clerk, a petition from Mrs. Bonanno, date stamped February 21, 2019, and the petition sought to amend Section 42-2... sought to amend Section 42-2 of the charter with specific language regarding, again, the issuance of the bonds. And the language in the petition begins with "the town manager and the town council shall..." And much like Mr. Haynes' petition, I find that this petition, just that language referring to the manager, but also other references, contradict the Bond Act, the specific language that was approved and authorized, again, by the town legislature and then voted on by the voters. You will, when you review, as I'm sure most of you have, the House bill and the Senate bill that is referred to as the Bond Act with regard to this $5.8 million, you will not find any authorization whatsoever for the manager. There doesn't exist any authorization for the town manager. So for this ordinance now to introduce and give the town manager authority would violate the Bond Act, which again is state law. And for that reason, I opine that it was invalid.
Thank you. So is there a motion to Mark this as accepted or invalid?
Motion to Mark is invalid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Before we get to anyone from the council? Go ahead.
Council President, my name is Matt Jersey. I'm here representing, good evening. I'm here representing Susan Bonanno Sisalini and the Love Your Library Coalition. I have significant solicitor experience, nearly 10 years working for Mayor's Angel Taverse, James Diosa, as well as significant legislative drafting experience, working for House Speaker Nick Mattiello and majority of Joe Schicarchi. In fact, I was in the House when these two public laws were drafted in Paxton. The Town Charter in Chapter 4, as discussed tonight, requires three things for this council to mark petition as valid. First, the petitioner must be a qualified elector, that's a fancy way to say, registered voter, of which Susan is. Second, that it enact or rescind an ordinance, a resolution, a regulation, and in this case, it is not seeking to amend the charter as the solicitor just stated, it is seeking to enact an ordinance. It would add Section 2-42 to the town's Code of Ordinances. And three, and this is critical, and Councilman Pugh has stated this several times tonight, a proposal by a qualified elector. The charter specifically says in 1-4-1, "The legislative powers are vested with the people of Naragansett." And the only way those powers can be wrestled away from the people is if a state law, a federal law, or a constitution prohibits it. And in this instance, the solicitor has offered the opinion that the Bond Act, the two public laws sponsored by Senator G. and Representative Tansy, in some way prohibit this proposed ordinance, Section 2-42. I've reviewed both public laws. There is nothing in either public law that prohibit the enactment of this ordinance. In fact, Section 42-2 does not propose to change the bond in any way. The Bond Act is very general and does not mention a specific project site. The proposed Section 42-2 merely clarifies and adds an additional requirement, specifically that the library be built on the exact site, as we mentioned before, as set forth in the Board of Canvassers' legal advertisement. The fact that the Board of Canvassers' legal advertisement, and I stress, legal advertisement, and this is important relative to a bond opinion, references the exact site upon which the library was to be built, and voters reasonably relied on that legal explanation when voting, could call into question the validity of the referendum if the library is not built, renovated on that site. This in turn could cause a problem, as stated earlier by the solicitor. This could cause a problem for bond counsel in giving a clean legal opinion on the bond. Therefore, the ordinance before you, presented in this voter initiative petition, could be seen as curing or fixing a significant irregularity in the bond process that this town went through in 2016. The significant irregularity being that the legal advertisement was site-specific when the Bond Act and ballot question were not. Furthermore, the solicitor's opinion frankly carries very little weight as he is not a nationally recognized bond counsel. As you know, firms who act as bond counsel to cities and towns are nationally recognized bond counsel listed in the bond buyer's municipal marketplace, otherwise known as the Red Book. The town's bond counsel is such a nationally recognized firm. And while the opinion of the solicitor is in fact a legal opinion, it would be in the best interest of the town if you had received, which you did not, a legal opinion from the town's bond counsel. What I heard tonight was the solicitor say, "Bond counsel, quote, 'is not a fan.'" Well, last time I checked, "not a fan" is not a legal opinion. It's kind of a feeling or a sentiment, but it's not a legal opinion, and I certainly didn't see a copy of a legal opinion from a bond counsel stating that this proposed ordinance violates state law. This is a properly drafted ordinance that conforms to the charter, and this council ought to vote for it. Alternatively, we will be seeking judicial relief immediately in the Superior Court.
Thank you. So the charter, though, the process is that the town solicitor opines. The charter's pretty clear on that, and the bond counsel you can consult with. So I understand your point, but that's what the language of the law says. Also, inconsistencies between our charter and state law, state law is going to prevail. So, and the state law was allowing the voter... The state law was allowing the voters to authorize the borrowing, right? And this ordinance would, says "shall," "shall borrow the $5.8 million." So that's in conflict with the authorization to borrow. It's an extension. It's a mandate, to mandate to borrow rather than an authorization to borrow.
Mayor Jersey.
Go ahead.
So the state law offered an authorization, the voters voted for. What you have before you is the enactment of that authorization. What Section 1-4-1 says is if the town council can do it, that's legislative powers. If you can do it, then the voters can do it by initiative. So my question is, is can the town council enact the authorization of that proposed bond? Of course you can. And this ordinance simply says, "Yes, we are now going to do the bond that the voters asked for," which is a power that you have and the power that the people in Naragansett have through voter initiative.
The word is "authorize," and we kind of lose track of that in this conversation.
There's nothing in state law that prohibits this ordinance. That's the standard.
But we have a difference of opinion on that.
It's a legal matter. If it doesn't meet the standard, this council has to validate.
We have a difference of opinion on that. All right, so is there anyone else who would like to speak? Richard?
First of all, I'd like to, Win and I do agree on one thing. Go get them Gators, and let's hope our school wins in the tournament. And this problem, I think, just amplifies the difficulties we have. We have in motion 24 of the Belmont building. We come to 26, we have the former Belmont slash IGA location. We can't get this straight. And until we do, voting on anything is foolish. We would have the library started now if we had been content with the IGA location. But we keep on shifting locations, one, two, three, four. And this is really unhealthy. We can't even, this group can't even agree between the Belmont building and the former Belmont slash IGA location. This is not good. When we talk about this, let's talk about the old IGA market, which all of us voted on yes or no. But let's forget the second floor, this hideous mistake that the prior council made. And forget all the liquor stores. What if we're going to talk about this? Let us say Building 1, Building 2, Building 3, because this is what it is. And we just can't seem to understand this.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else?
Matt, may I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, the Bond Act cannot be modified by ordinance. That's number one. Number two, I suggested that the town manager language was problematic, but I didn't say that was the only problem. There are many problems. If we continue on here, in the first line, "town manager and the town council," all of a sudden, by ordinance, we're introducing the town manager. Can't do it, with all due respect. Before the five-year deadline included in the two bills, well, as Patrick has noted, there is no five-year deadline on the issuance of bonds. I think there might be some confusion over notes with that language. But the bottom line here is, you cannot modify the Bond Act by ordinance. You can't do it.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Actually, I'm going to speak on this side.
Go ahead.
See, I disagree that you're modifying the Bond Act. The Bond Act happened, and it was authorized. So that's done, authorized by the people. Now it's sitting there, now being used. So this is a separate ordinance to now say, "Let's use it." Authorization's already done. You're not changing the wording of some...
You are changing it, because you're now saying the manager has the authority to participate. The Bond Act doesn't give authority to the manager.
It says authorizing the town in Naragansett to finance the action.
And if you read through it, it's the town council president, and the town council votes, the town council president signs it, the treasurer, the director of finance signs it. The manager's not noted anywhere. Since when is the manager a voting participant?
But this isn't asking the town manager to vote or to sign.
Well, what's it say?
It says, "The town manager and the town council shall, before the five-year deadline, barb."
Right, the town manager and the town council, it's including the town manager, contrary to what the Bond Act says.
So that if the town manager was removed from this, it would be...
Well, the reference to the five-year, I don't know where the, the five-year deadline is incorrect. And we can get bond counsel to identify the other problems that he suggested existed. But again, and maybe we can get an opinion from bond counsel, he cannot recall one time, other than the late 1800s, early 1900s, where a body tried to force the issuance of bonds. As I stated, the problem is, the town council president, the director of finance, must represent to certain things. If you mandate this, they determine that the representations aren't accurate, and they refuse to do it, what are you going to do? You can't force somebody to sign it if they don't believe it's true. So it goes beyond just issuing bonds. There's a lot that goes into issuing bonds. There's a certainty that the project's going to be built, that there's no litigation, that it's going to be done within the budget. There's a whole host of things. And then there's a whole litany of security reps and IRS reps. And so that it's just not practical to mandate somebody sign those representations. It's not that simple. And, I'm not bond counsel. I've spoken to bond counsel extensively, and bond counsel will come and talk to you. It's a bad idea. It's a bad idea. That's not from me, that's from the bond counsel. It's not a fan, whatever the terminology you want to use. But in this particular petition, it violates state law.
All right, so a few things that you said there. You know, it's a bad idea, or if it introduces complexities to the process, or maybe Laura Canyon is uncomfortable signing it. We don't know that. We don't know if bond counsel's uncomfortable issuing it without a statement from him, you know, a written statement. If that was provided tonight, then I could read that, and I would have it right here.
No one can tell you that until it's time to issue the bonds, right? Because those reps don't apply until it's time to actually sign the documents. So no one can tell you tonight whether they're acceptable or not. My point being is that no one knows in the future if those representations are going to be accurate or not. That's the point. You just don't know. And to mandate that somebody issue the bonds, which requires the signature to these reps and representations, it's just, you can't mandate that somebody rep to something that they're unfamiliar with, don't know, and the circumstances surrounding it, not even know.
But you can't mandate it because of state law, or you're just saying that's a bad idea?
I'm saying it's a bad idea.
Okay, well, I'm just going off of the charter.
But in this particular case, we don't need to go beyond this. It's my opinion, you make the decisions. It's my opinion that this ordinance, post-ordinance, violates the Bond Act, and as such is invalid. We don't need to go beyond the petition in front of us.
Thank you.
Did you want to go, Mickey?
All right, as you know, I am a library supporter, but I cannot support this initiative. We went to Great Lakes to find Mark and his firm to represent us, and, you know, he's the town's attorney, and I am not qualified because of the legal ease involved with this. So I have to reject this petition.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion to Mark invalid, approved, four to one. Item number 27 is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to adopt a resolution supporting the voter's decision to build a new library. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Second. All right, and again, we'll try to Mark first to share with us his opinion on validity, invalidity, or acceptance.
Okay, so February 21, 2019, I received a petition from the town clerk, date stamped the same date. The petition was submitted by Mrs. Bonanno. And Mrs. Bonanno submitted a resolution. The resolution states that notwithstanding, notwithstanding any ordinance, resolution, motion, action, to the contrary, including but not limited to the motion to offer for sale, made in accordance with Agenda Item 12 of the January 22, 2019 Town Council Agenda, the real property located at, and it goes on to describe in detail, the land that was purchased from Gilbane, shall not be offered for sale, sold, leased, or its ownership transferred in any way unless such real estate transaction is either approved by the initiative process or it is for the relocation of the Mary Lutens Library to this site. So the resolution seeks to override any existing ordinance, action taken, or any item properly in the charter. The town council has the authority in the charter to sell town property. They properly exercise their authority to offer for sale the Belmont Building, the IGA Building, whatever Richard wants to call it tonight. This seeks to undo decisions made by the town council. Now, I agree with my brother who earlier stated that the process permits voters to enact or rescind town laws, regulations, ordinances, and resolutions. This seeks to undo a decision. I, as I said, when Mr. Haynes submitted his modification to...
I, as I said, when Mr. Haynes submitted his modification to the ordinance, to prevent the town council from selling town property without a referendum by the voters, I think that's something that would be proper, had it been drafted proper. But to now undo decisions that were properly made with the authority of the charter, I don't even think it reaches the point where it's entitled to a vote on valid or invalid. I mean, just play out the scenarios in your head. If this was brought after the purchase of the building, and somebody wanted to undo the purchase, how would you do that? If somebody didn't like the town engineer that was hired, are they going to bring a petition to undo the decision to hire the town engineer? It's just, in my opinion, not what Chapter Four is all about. You can provide legislation, you cannot undo decisions made within the authority as set forth in the charter, in my opinion. And I think this is completely inappropriate. And you can play this all day long with scenarios, every decision, if this is allowed to move forward, that every decision that the town council makes can be undone. And there are certain things you can undo. I mean, enter into a contract and try to undo it. Hire somebody and then try to undo it. Agree to a union contract, try to undo it. This is not what this was intended to be. This is not legislation. They're trying to undo an executive decision that was properly executed.
Thank you. All right, did anyone from the council before? Mr. Jersey?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm going to go a little backwards in response to what this solicitor just said. What's interesting about his comments is he mentioned, you're going to violate a CBA, or you're going to violate an existing contract. And what's interesting about that is there's a thing called the contracts clause. It's in the Constitution. There's a thing called violating CBAs. There's case law, and there's state statutes against it. And this is the real point. The council, when hearing a proposed voter initiative petition, the sole job of the council is to figure out, is it by a registered voter, check. Is it an ordinance or a resolution that enacts or rescinds a law, check. Does it violate state or federal law, a constitution, state or federal, or existing case law? It does not. Therefore, it is valid per the Charter of the Town in Arrogancy. To be clear, Chapter Four specifically authorizes the enactment of a resolution. What is before you is a resolution. Now, let's just take out the notwithstanding, anything to the contrary legislative clause, which is typical legislative drafting, but let's just look at the bare bones of what this says. Therefore, being resolved that the town, no, that the real property located at the, and then it gives the description, shall not be offered for sale, sold, leased, or its ownership transferred in any way unless such real estate transaction is either approved by the initiative process, or is for the relocation of the library. This is exactly what you just heard, relative to question three, right? This is exactly the same question. Your solicitor applied, if it was grammatically correct, he would support it. And now he's not supporting this resolution. So I'm a little lost on this, because it's saying, now, if I were to take his logic to its logical conclusion, he would think that I'm, that we are making a petition drafted as a reconsideration of a motion, as to what happened in your January 22nd meeting. That's not what's before you. What's before you is the enactment of a resolution restricting the sale of a property absent approval of the voters. Is the property under contract? No, I don't believe so. So, that doesn't violate the contracts clause. Is there any other restriction under state law that would prevent this council's legislative powers from being enacted, to prevent the sale of this building? If there's not, it's legally valid, and the council has an obligation to the people to put it, mark it valid, send it to the clerk, and see if 850 people will sign it, and put it on the ballot next November. For that reason, we ask the council mark this as accepted, as it is legal, and there's no state law to the contrary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt May, mayor response now?
Of course. The big difference between Mr. Haynes' petition and this one, is Mr. Haynes seeks to revise an ordinance. That would change the way the council, change the council's authority going forward. This seeks to undo a decision that was made in conformance with the authority given to the town council by the charter. There is a big difference between legislation, which Mr. Haynes purported to introduce, to change the town's authority, and as such, you would be bound by that limitation. Again, this is to provide for legislative checks and balances. This is to be legislative proposals for consideration by the town. This is trying to undo a decision that was properly made. They may not like it, but it was properly made. So there's a big difference between changing an ordinance and the authority going forward, and trying to undo a decision that was made in conformance with the charter and the ordinances in place. Big difference.
Mayor response quickly?
Thank you. Quickly, yes.
There is a difference between a motion to offer for sale and a sale. It's two different, entirely different propositions. This council, on January 22nd, made a motion to offer for sale. This resolution, if enacted, as this council could tonight or any other night, would say that the sale has regulations. It's two different decisions. It is, this resolution is not touching that decision. It is an enactment of a resolution, speaking to the terms under which that sale can happen. Two separate transactions.
Our resolutions at the town council level, we have, we often have resolutions and we have motions. Our motions are things in which we take action. The resolutions tend to be statements of policy or opinion. For example, we had, we have resolutions about, about supporting the Girl Scouts and other civic groups. We've had resolutions regarding legislation at the State House that we have an opinion on. So, this, and item number 24, which I didn't say at the time, item 24 and item 27, both are, they were to be resolutions, but they're kind of just using, first of all, that's an opinion, resolutions are statements of opinion, but they're really using the word resolution, they're dressing up basically a motion to undo a motion of the town council. And then, secondly, I do go back to the Bond Act. It's not an act mandating borrowing, it's, it's an act authorizing borrowing. That's the words of the state act. And then, we make the decision as the town council, with all the things that are in front of us, if we're going to borrow the money for that particular project, and we don't have to borrow all of it. Is there anything else from the council, and then we'll go to the top of it?
So this is a motion, this has nothing to do with the Bond Act, right? This is just about selling the building, so, just focus on that. Part of the charter says that the right of the voter initiative and referendum shall provide the electorate with all the legislative powers now vested in the council by this charter. So, all the powers that the council have, the voters have as well. So, Mark, can you tell us that, that the voters, through a resolution, are unable to petition for a binding resolution? Just in general, not this, but just in general?
As you stated, I believe the chapter petitions and initiatives gives the voters the right to legislate. This is not legislation. Win Haynes' attempt to modify the ordinance was legislation. This is targeting a direct decision that was made pursuant to the authority given to the town council members. So, I don't, I apply that this is not legislation, and therefore, not proper.
So it's not legislation because it's about a specific motion? That's why?
It's, it's trying to undo a specific decision, which the town council had the authority to make. As opposed to Wins, which had a general, wanted to legislate in such a way that limited the town council's authority to sell property without a referendum. That's proper. It's legislation. It would govern decisions going forward. Here, this is not legislation. This is trying to unwind the decision that was made properly.
Okay, so, when we're talking about legislation, there's like, bills are legislation and resolutions, different types of resolutions are legislation. So just by, just the definition of legislation would encompass, would include resolutions. And purpose of legislation is, you know, based on my research, to regulate, to authorize, to outlaw, to provide funds, to sanction, to grant, to declare, or to restrict. So all of those functions are part of legislation, and a resolution is legislation. And we've seen, so it doesn't have to become law to be legislation. That's not necessarily part of the definition. So there's, you know, different types of resolutions, like, an annual budget can be brought forward as a resolution, or appropriation of funds, or a declaration of war is actually, could be done as a resolution. So that's just a singular thing. It's not necessarily a law. So, I'm just, I don't really understand how you're defining what is legislative and what is not, because I'm going through all these examples of things that are considered legislation, at least based on my good researches. So, well, and, you know, I have no training in this, you do, so I just...
Jesse, you're focused on the terminology. I really don't care if you call it a resolution or an ordinance. I look at the intent of that chapter. And the intent of that chapter is to provide the residents with the ability to provide checks and balances and legislate, not unwind decisions that were properly made, that, in my definition, whatever you label it, is not legislation. So I guess we can differ on what the intent of the chapter is. In my opinion, legislation does not mean unwinding decisions you don't like, even though they were done within the authority given to the town council.
But right in the first sentence, it says, permit the voters to enact or rescind town laws, regulations, ordinances, or resolutions. So a resolution is a decision by the council. It says right here that we can, that it can be rescinded.
I don't think that was a resolution.
But, so, you're saying that only, you can only rescind laws, regulations, ordinances, and resolutions? It's a decision, correct?
I don't know how else I can state it. It's my opinion that it would be very bad precedent to interpret it, to mean that if you don't like a decision that was properly made, you can unwind it. Now, there are, there are other laws that would hamper some of that, but there are many decisions the town council makes that may be short of the execution of a contract. I mean, personnel decisions, I mean, there are, there are many things that you can't govern, in my opinion, you can't govern our town by second guessing and allowing the electorate to unwind lawfully made decisions. If you don't like it, change the rule by which that decision was governed. Again, Win Haynes, perfect example. You don't like the town council making decisions to sell property, then amend the ordinance. But I think targeting certain decisions is just wrong, in my opinion. That wasn't the, my opinion of that chapter and that charter is legislative in nature, not unwinding specific decisions that were lawfully made. That's just my interpretation. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I see it as, the whole purpose of the right to petition is to give the people that power to do that. And I guess that's, you know, the difference in our interpretation.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Boy, I bet this one is proud of this guy, huh? Hey, you know? Again, we hired a town solicitor, I'm going to go with him, with his decision. I cannot support this. But, do you really think we're going to find a buyer that's going to sit here and wait for a vote from this council to sell the building with 250 people? I seriously doubt that way. And what business is going to buy a building that was used for a library and then try to open up business? So, I don't think, I don't think the planets are in line for that. So, I will agree with Thompson's. Thank you.
Yes.
You did say, that a voter...
You can direct the conversation.
I'm sorry, that a voter could, is a legislator. A voter is not a legislator. A voter, a voter votes for the legislator to make the laws. This is not a court of law, this is not a senate, this is not the house. This is a town council. The town council, I believe, is elected, is elected to represent the will, once again, the will of the voters. I don't see why voter initiative would be unlawful, or, in this case, out of place. I think, I believe voter initiative is there, so that when a decision, a decision is made in a small town like this, a small area, where almost, where 67% or so, correct me if I'm wrong, 67, 68% of the voters want one thing, then it's time that they can use, that's what voter initiative is for. We shouldn't have to wait till 2020 or the next election, because it's just putting it further off in the future. Voter initiative can do it faster. Unless one of you good people can see how important it is to represent your community, I think we should, voter initiative should be something that we could all use.
Mr.?
I appreciate the advice of the solicitor tonight on the first four voter initiative petitions. I find myself agreeing with him 100%. On this one, I find myself disagreeing with him. He gave us our opinion as to whether or not this is the right way to run a town council meeting or the town in Arrogancy. That is an opinion, not based on what the solicitor should be doing, which is providing the legal advice. I don't expect the solicitor to tell us whether or not we should be governing or doing this this way. The voter initiative, in my mind, is the equivalent of a veto override by the leader of our, our White House. And in this case, the voter initiative is the mechanism whereby we should be able to override the decision of the town council in cases like this. The town solicitor worries about contracts and other types of problems. The counsel for the petition reminded us that contracts would not be covered under that. This process will take time. This is not something where someone is going to get nominated, and someone thinks that that's some kind of, or someone's going to get hired, and someone thinks that's some kind of special privilege, and it's going to be overturned right away. I don't see the town in Arrogancy voters putting up with that kind of nonsense, trying to override personnel decisions unless they're egregious. This is not an excuse for ignoring the petitioner, and it's not an excuse to find this invalid.
We, the charter clearly states that with the initiative process, there can be an enactment or an amendment of a resolution, regulation, ordinance, or law. And the only, the times that we, the times that those cannot go forward are if they, the proposed initiative violates state or federal law, state or federal constitution, or common law decisions interpreting the statute... or common law decisions interpreting the statutes and constitution. So I think Mr. Davis articulated the difference between motions versus resolutions, regulations, ordinances and laws. Is there anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion to mark as invalid, approved for 2-1. All right, our next item is open forum, so I ask everyone to get here to the time limit. This is the time where we can comment on issues of concern in the town.
So the 30 minute timer, it's all against at 9:30?
Yes. Richard.
I'll go back to an analogy I've used a couple of times. The Narragansett Library Tom has been spinning out of control since 2014.
Richard, I'm gonna stop you and let people come out and then, like, so that we can hear you. All right, so just give it 10 seconds.
Anyone would have done that in my class.
Times have changed.
I have, in some ways, sadly.
Okay, everyone can file out so Richard can be heard, thank you.
Yeah, the Narragansett Library Tom has been spinning out of control since 2014 at an ever increasing speed and an ever increasing size. If that were true, we wouldn't have had this debacle tonight. Part of this spin has been caused by horse. Notion that cost will be figured out at the very end of the process. This may make a little bit of sense for a newly constructed library, but it is totally fatal in a complete renovation, reconstruction of a library, especially when there is no connection between the three separate buildings, except one little windy staircase. It may look like one structure, it ain't one structure. And again, we voted on the IGA grocery store for this. Not one of the most fervent supporters of the library who have all left would not consider costs of being first importance. If that person had walked those three structures to construct a mansion, good God, cost would have been the first criteria considered. And as one moves on through an architecture, cost is vital. Cost does not come into play at the very end of a construction project. It has to begin at the beginning. Nobody would have converted those three useless structures into a mansion without considering costs from the first second, not the last second. We have waited until the end of the process to determine the cost estimate. Who would do this? Answer, no rational person.
Thank you, Mrs. Nado.
Mary Nito, 10 Second Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. We would have a better idea of the, we had a cost estimate that was done by a cost estimate professional for the new library, but it would have been more evident to us what the cost would be if we had released the RFP and done all the engineering studies. So if that had happened, we wouldn't be arguing about what we think the cost is. We'd actually know that by now, based on the current construction cost. So I just wanted to mention that based on what you said. The other things that I wanted to mention was, there was an article in the Narragansett Times this past week where they talked about the history of the bond referendums in Narragansett. And all the bonds that have been approved in Narragansett have been started or finished, all except the, the bond for the library, which was obviously 7.9% approved by the town. So we wouldn't have to have all these initiatives going on if we had gone by the will of the people. And that's the thing I think is so sad, is dividing the town, the town voters voted for this overwhelmingly and we still aren't doing anything with that. So I was very surprised earlier when Jill said, you know, we are a democracy, we have a democratic process, but we don't listen to our voters who voted for the bonds. And so it's really sad. I didn't grow up in Narragansett, I grew up in Rhode Island, but I'm not used to this undemocratic process and it's very sad to see the town so split on this. Thank you.
From San Gino.
To Lindon Road.
I'd like to start by thanking the town council for this opportunity to speak tonight. It is really unfortunate that the open forum has been moved to the end of the meeting. This recent decision makes it difficult for teenagers in our town to be heard by our government on a school night. A few years back, I remember coming with my softball team when there was a discussion about school funding. It was my first exposure to civics and I think we all felt great to be involved. The open forum means we move back to the beginning of the Narragansett Town Council meetings for many reasons, including giving an opportunity for people my age to speak. I'd like to take this opportunity to discuss the importance of our town library and the need for a bigger and better facility. I recently competed in the Pier Middle School's National History Day competition and was fortunate enough to have won first place for the individual civic category. Our town library played a large role in my research, supplementing the school library's resources with a large collection of reference materials. Even though I am an eighth grader, many of the resources I used for my project were in the young adults section, which is part of the children's room. I can attest that the space is undersized for the need and often kids all the way up to high school have to wait for resources to arrive from other libraries in the state network. With the pressures and deadlines for school projects, sometimes this way can create additional stress for students at a time when school is stressful enough. Additionally, I have heard that some people have argued that we can rely more on our school libraries than the town library. I believe this is a greatly misguided idea. While I support our school libraries, their space is also too small. Having numerous grades worth of resources, their materials, their, having numerous grades worth of educational content as well as casual reading material, casual reading materials, the resources are limited. Beyond that, school work often leads me to the town library in the evenings and on weekends, showing that the school library frequently is not open and available when I need it. This Saturday, I'll compete at Rhode Island College in the state finals for National History Day. It is my hope that my hard work and efforts, including the reference materials I have used from our town library, will give me a chance to succeed at the state level. It is also my sincere hope that we stop delaying the important topic of library improvements and getting the new library open in the Belmont Base as soon as possible. As a resident of this town, I'm counting on the town council to deliver on this need and to help me and all other students have a chance to escalate in academics, as well as your fiduciary responsibility to foster the future for the next generation of Narragansett students. Thank you.
Stanley Chowsky, Narragansett. I, so great to hear a young person tell us in points of library, surely feel they are very important. In fact, I was driving by Sunday and it's one of the few days I don't really have to work too hard and I noticed the library wasn't open. And I think that's one of the better days to help support the youngsters and anyone else that must have go. The library should be open on Sunday. Oh, oh, what's the hours? I guess I missed it. Is it open all day? I apologize. I went by, it wasn't open, I just, I just thought it was.
It is open on Sunday.
It is open on Sunday. And how many hours, what's the, what's the time on that? What's the time? I don't know.
You made stone soup though, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I did for the first time, I did it last year. I did want to talk about costs since the professor brought that up and I want to keep our attention to cost. I mean, I'm happy that at least cost is being heard a little more than it used to. And as we're getting into budget season, I just wanted to let you know again that my social security income went up somewhere around 2.7%. So I think that's a guideline that I'm hoping that you're gonna look at. Something less than 3% increase in our budget as you get into the budget season, 2.7%. I don't know what the road bond is gonna cost us and how that's gonna figure into it. But, you know, as we look at it, the target, the target should be closer to that 2.7, not some large 4% or whatever it might be. I hope you just keep careful on it, thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. Yes.
David Smith, 24 Castle, Narragansett. The library will be open on Sunday, March 31st, starting at noon time. And I encourage you to attend the third and final presentation of the 2019 On Petaklmsk series. And this is the with the speaker series and we will have Jane Henity, who is the director of the Historic New England Properties at Casey Farm and Watson Farm on Jamestown. This is the third, in January, plans for Canachan Farm and on February, February presentation, a wonderful talk on Chadle Farm in Wakefield. And now I'm gonna polish it off with the third historic farm in South County. This is a wonderful series, this is the eighth season. However, I would recommend that you register at the library website because space is limited and we had overflow crowd the last time. So you can register at N A R L I D dot org or On Petaklmsk dot org. And I hope to see you on Sunday, March 31st, when the library will be open. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Jeff.
Jeff, Detler Village at Point Judith. For a moment, I thought I was in the wrong place. It certainly sounded like lawyers at a divorce court. And who would have thought, and I'm gonna talk about the four unrelated ordinance, that that would be a breath of fresh air for this council? While participating in the Narragansett Citizens Police Academy, one of the guest speakers was our local magistrate. The local magistrate walked us through his review of the four unrelated ordinance and his review of the brief by the ACOU and our town solicitor at the time. He made three observations. First, the magistrate stated that he has no authority to overrule a decision by a superior court or a court above his level. Second, after reading the brief offered by our town solicitor, he found no discernible comment that would change the ordinance to where it could be adapted for four unrelated. More concerning, the third point he made, he stated that the ordinance now stands as clauses if remain undressed, will delete the entire purpose of four unrelated in the ordinance. The clauses state an employee may live on the premises as well. Thus, one person could be paid a dollar and that person parks the cars. Another person could be paid a dollar and that person could be doing the dishes, et cetera, et cetera. That point is further accentuated on page 22 of his review. And he states on page 22 of that review, "The court feels obliged to further comment about provision, section 2.2, the exemption of live-in servants and employees from the restrictions of unrelated persons living in that dwelling." He further states, "Section 2.2 does not define servants or employees. Therefore, there is a potential for unrelated individuals living together beyond four persons in a household to be claimed as servants or employees." I urge this council, and this is the third council in five years that have been dealing with the four unrelated, to review this ordinance while we are in a sit and wait and do nothing mode until progress does something. We have something that's lingering before us. We have a chance to change it and get rid of the servant and employee aspects of the current ordinance as it states. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Next item is a motion to retire to executive session of the town council and according to private and general laws, section 42-46-4 and section.